We want to welcome you to today's candidate forum for city commission seat for the mayor's race with incumbent mayor John Daly and Commissioner Kristen Dozier. My name is Amber Tynan, the Executive Director of United Partners for Human Services, and we thank you so much for taking time today to join us for this conversation. We recognize the value and power of cross-sector collaboration. So I'd like to welcome my co-hosts for today's event Kathleen Spiehar, the Executive Director of COCA, the Council on Culture and Arts, and Kim Grippa, the Executive Director of INI, the Institute of Nonprofit Innovation and Excellence. And before we dive into our conversation today, I just want to review some Zoom etiquette with you all. This is a public event, so it is being recorded and it will be available after the fact. We ask that each of you mute your lines, or we will mute you to ensure everyone has the chance to hear the candidates and their responses to our questions. And we will have some time at the end for questions if you have them, so please hold them for that time. You're welcome to make comments in the chat, but we will not be reviewing that for questions until the end. This morning's forum is really about learning more about each of our candidates and their positions on issues impacting our sector. And we know that our sector is vital to this community, and we believe in engaging our local leaders when addressing the growing needs of our community in the nonprofit sector is essential. We have and always will be vital to our community's health, and Tallahassee Leon County is no different. When addressing the hard issues in our community like poverty and focusing on job creation to attracting new businesses, plans should include collaboration with our nonprofit sector. So our thanks in advance to our candidates for their responses to our 2022 questionnaire. We will link that questionnaire for you in the chat. And for now, I'm going to pass it over to Kim Grippa to share our ground rules for the forum today.
Good morning, everyone. Here are the ground rules for today. The moderator will ask the questions and give each candidate the chance to answer. We are asking that the candidates answer in alphabetical order. So that would be Mayor Daly will respond first, and then Commissioner Dozier will respond second. With each question, the candidates have up to 120 seconds to answer. Amber will be our timekeeper, and she'll let you know when your time is up. However, if you are in the middle of a thought, please feel free to finish that even if you are notified that your time is up. And as Amber stated, the chance to ask questions will be provided at the end. Thank you.
Awesome. And with that, we'll get right to it. Our first question, again, starting with Mayor Daly, is going to be, given the challenge of budget constraints, how would you stretch or increase taxpayer dollars to increase Tallahassee Leon County's unmet human services need?
Well, good morning, everybody. It is a beautiful day in Tallahassee. I am joined, by the way, with the first dog of Tallahassee, Lulu, who has joined me as well. I want to thank UPHS, I want to thank INI, I want to thank COCA for hosting this forum. It's great to be with you today. Budget constraints are something that we deal with in every aspect of government that we move forward. So we've got to have leadership that is continuously going to be creative. Now, sometimes that means that we have to think up new strategies, as we will talk about later, I'm sure, in regards to gun violence and putting more money into the pot, or whether we're talking about COCA and looking at our current funding structures and the challenges that are had and making sure that we are trying to meet those needs. But I am very proud of my record dating back to even when I was on the county commissioner, always trying to push for increased funding specifically for the CHSP process and for COCA, and I will continue to do so as the mayor of Tallahassee.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you all, COCA, INI, UPHS, and particularly Amber, Kim, Kathleen, for putting this together, and for everyone who's joined us today. This is a very important conversation, and I think when this question in particular, the budgetary strains and how to increase the dollars to help the human service sector, this is one that we have made some progress on. I have been a strong supporter for the increased funding in the sector for the county. I think at the city side, we could look for ways to add general revenue to the CHSP budget that allows more nonprofits that may not qualify for some of the specific programs, grant funding that's in that category, to qualify. We also really need to step up our partnerships. I'm very proud to have pushed for, and we got it in the budget this year, a grants manager at the county. This position was let go years ago, and bringing that person back in to look for collaborative ways to apply for grants and increase our funding, it's all about partnerships. We know this. We don't get as much money in our region as most places in the state, and we have to step up our partnerships and work collaboratively to get more funding into the system.
Fantastic. And I thank you both for being succinct. My timer didn't even go off.
I'm next. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here, Mayor Daly. Good to see you, and you're up first. So our question is, what should the top three budgetary priorities of the city and county include from your perspective?
Wait, quick question. Let me clarify. So I'm going first on every question?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Will you repeat the question, Kathleen?
Absolutely. What should the top three budgetary priorities of the city and county include from your perspective?
Well, I think that we've got a lot of challenges and a lot of priorities moving forward, but if I have to pick three top, in no particular order, number one, we have to continue to concentrate on poverty in our community. Now, that is a big umbrella. We could talk about housing, we can talk about food deserts, we can talk about health, we can talk about mental health, but poverty is an issue that we have to continue to be diligent about. Number two, job creation. We need to continue expanding our economy locally. Right now, we have one of the fastest-growing economies in the state of Florida per capita than any other municipality, and we have to continue to build jobs and expand our local economy. Third, we have to be resilient on climate change as a priority as well, to make sure that as we do grow and as we provide services as the number-one public utility in the nation, that we are continuously concentrating on making sure that we do it right, and quite frankly, that we take care of Mother Earth as we do.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Over to you, Commissioner Dozier. Again, let me just repeat the question. What should the top three budgetary priorities of the city and county include from your perspective?
This is a very interesting question to me because there are core responsibilities for city and county that have to be funded, public safety, transportation, infrastructure. And yet, each of those areas supports our community in so many ways. If we look at public safety and infrastructure, we need to make sure that EMS and fire can access every home in our community. There are places on the south side that we have roads that are little private roads that you can't access for EMS. We have stormwater flooding in some areas. Our public infrastructure, these core responsibilities of the city and county, we should be looking at each of them from the angle of how do we help prevent people from loss of property, loss of life, and support their ability to get jobs, to increase their, you know, personal sustainability, and that's addressing poverty, access affordable housing. So transportation was also on that list. We need to increase public transportation. That helps people get to jobs. So I looked at this question a little different because just for city municipalities and counties in general, we have some core responsibilities. I think what we don't do as well is think about each of those core responsibilities and how it connects to people who are vulnerable to areas of our community that we have not invested in, and how that can prevent people from sliding into poverty or help them get out of poverty.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, I just wanted to acknowledge that we are seeing some questions in the chat, and so just to confirm that we will be taking questions at the end.
Okay, it's my turn. Please share more about your commitment to a new day for Tallahassee where civility is essential and backdoor dealings are a thing of the past.
Well, Kim, that's a great question. And unfortunately, when I got elected as mayor of Tallahassee, this community was struggling, going through, you know, federal indictments and criminal corruption trials. And that's unfortunate, and I'm very proud of my leadership from the mayor's office, making sure that we change the way that we do government. As mayor, we've done that in several different ways. Number one, we have definitely become more transparent. One of the opportunities as mayor that you have is shaping the meetings themselves. I provide opportunity for citizens to participate at every step of the process, and I'm very proud of that. I'm also very proud to be the champion over on the city level and having my colleagues believe in our movement and passing the number-one ethics package in the history, the strongest ethics package in the history of the city of Tallahassee and the strongest ethics package of any municipality in the state of Florida. We have other communities that contact us wanting a copy of what we've done. Now, are we done, Kim? Absolutely not. I begin every meeting with the civility pledge. I begin every meeting reminding everyone that we need to set the example. Now, look, nobody's perfect. My goodness, I had to apologize once for cutting off Commissioner Porter at a meeting. But it's also important that when we make mistakes that we stand up and we accept it and we apologize and we move forward. But I will continue to be that mayor that will bring people together, make sure that they are involved with the process, make sure that the process is 100% transparent, and I'm proud of the efforts that we've done to clean up City Hall through our ethics reform package. It's a great question. Thank you.
Was that to me, Kim?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. I was just waiting for it. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. So this is one of the most important questions, and that is saying something. You know, a forum on human services, nonprofits in general, if we don't begin our work with respect and respect for those whom we may agree with, who we may disagree with, respect for all people, we see a breakdown in civility. And quite bluntly, I would not be running for mayor if I had not seen incredible issues with civility, the conflicts, the controversies that have been there in the last four years. Yes, John promised four years ago when he was running to clean it up. We had had a lot of challenges because of the corruption and everything else. But I don't think we have seen enough work in the last few years. In fact, it has gotten worse. We may be open to public comment, but then he supports others who shut down meetings when colleagues, you know, are asking questions they may not like. But really, today and in this campaign, I think we have seen exactly how these two candidates are going to approach and have approached our communication with the public. My race is focused on the issues, what's important to our community. When you run against an incumbent, it's because you disagree on some things. His race is focused on tearing me down personally with lies, with things that are distorting the record, with attacking professionals in our community. That is the mark of someone who is willing to say and do anything to retain power. And I have to be this blunt because we're less than four weeks from the election, and if we don't make a change, then we will see four more years of the same. And it begins with civility, it begins with respect and welcoming everyone into the conversation because the city government is there to serve all the people of the community.
Do I get a chance to respond to that since that was personally mentioned in the...
We'll give 30 seconds, Mayor Daly.
That'd be great. Look, let me go back to the fact that, you know, Kristen has brought up on several different occasions, you know, I had a bad night one night and cut off Commissioner Porter. But again, let me state, what's important is that we own up when we make mistakes, which I have done and I apologize for. But when Commissioner Dozier launched her campaign, it was under the cloud of the email scandal and the text message scandal. You know, let's be very careful pointing out when other people make mistakes, when we compare each other to cartoon characters and body shame, when we refer with our team to the chairman of the IA Intergovernmental Agency to derogatory terms, and yet we still haven't heard any apologies whatsoever. That we should stick to the records and how we vote.
Amber, may I ask a question real quick just about the rules here?
You may.
You all chose to go in alphabetical order, so yes, that gives me the response to every time John speaks. But if he is allowed to get 30-second response to my answers, that feels a bit unfair here. So I just, I'm wondering how we're going to handle that going forward. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. This is always challenging. But I just want to clarify before we get into the other questions.
Sure. We will offer you a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like as well, and then we'll move to the next question.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I don't want to belabor this point too much, but again, as I said, respect, civility, welcoming all ideas, that is where we have to start. The text messages, I mean, quite bluntly, I was more transparent than anybody. I mean, I turned over lots of text messages. And the reference to a cartoon character, that was something to my aid. I did not broadcast that. I have never brought that into the public space, and it stems from early years when I felt bullied on the county commission and had to have some tricks to make myself, you know, smile and feel better. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we can all agree that nonprofits and human services are woefully underfunded, not only at a local but a state and federal level, while the demand for services continue to increase, and I think we've seen that compounded by COVID the last two years. Would you support an increase in funding in all categories for CHSP if elected for the next funding cycle, which would be 2024? And we'll start with you, Mayor Daly.
Absolutely, and I have the proven track record to stand by. When I was a county commissioner for many years, even before Commissioner Dozier was elected, I continuously, and some of you that have been around for a while, remember, I made the motion every year to bring the CHSP funding at that time up to a million-dollar level. And it took me about five years to get a majority on the county commission to do so, and I was very proud when we broke that marker. It's also about thinking creatively, and let's look at some very recent examples. Kathleen, loved working with you on the COCA funding. It was very important to get the additional funding into this budget. And as you know, I made the motion and I helped push it through for a unanimous vote to get that additional funding for COCA. I'm very proud of that. As of just this past Wednesday, I led the charge, I was the mayor that stood up to say we need to set aside a million dollars a year for the next five years specifically for gun violence intervention in our community. And Wednesday at our meeting, at our workshop, I was the one that crafted the motion not only to move forward with GVI and for specific funding, but to put a half a million dollars this year, an additional $600,000 next year into the CHSP funding specifically for gun violence. Now, yes, Amber, that's specific categories, but I will always, always support additional funding for the UPH, I mean, excuse me, the CHSP process, because it plays such a vital role in our community, and all the nonprofits do such great work.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you. The short answer is yes. Would absolutely support more funding. To expand on that, I'm proud to have supported increased funding over the years on the county. As I said before, I think we need to look for other resources to bring into the city side of CHSP. I've also served on the joint planning board when we had that and kind of unlocked a lot of things like two-year funding requirements, online applications, other things like that that help all of you, all nonprofits, get more, you know, consistent funding for a couple of years and submit your applications more, you know, more easily online. But importantly, we're looking at the metrics now. We're looking at the data that comes out of that, working with Ask You. All of these steps are really good. And the reason why I highlight that is we've got to be thinking ahead for funding to be allocated to COCA in September. Well, we knew the city pulled out of a lot of COCA funding years and years ago. John should have known that when he became mayor, and I think we could have stepped up COCA funding before two months, you know, before this fall. We should have done that. For CHSP, yes, we have increased funding for gun violence category. I wish that workshop had happened five, six months ago, and we could have gotten a start. We've also added money for a new homelessness category. That was the summer of '21. When those dollars run out, that was ARPAs dollars, we need to think about how we're going to continue these categories and continue funding for these different areas. So we need long-term thinking. We need people who will really dig into the details. That is how I have worked and really specifically with CHSP over the years, and I commit to doing that as mayor.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Candidates, our next question is about partnerships. So starting with you, Mayor Daly, what will you do to strengthen the partnership between local government and our nonprofit sector?
Well, I think that's a great question, Kathleen, and we've had a bit of a discussion about funding, increased funding, which is always a great, strong foundation for moving forward. But you need a mayor that's going to think creatively outside the box. Let's take mental health for an example. I brought the idea to the table for the creation of the team in mental health services, where we partnered up with the Appalachian Center, I see Jay Reeve here, that I'm proud to serve on the Board of Directors over there as well, to make sure that we have the proper response for those that are in crisis in the moment, that's not just a law enforcement response. So I think that's just one example of many of how we need to always creatively think about how we can work together. Now, I think we're going to talk in the future as well, but I think as a community, we can also do a much better job with collaboration, whether it's between the nonprofit sector, faith-based sector, the business community, and the government, to make sure that we're not working in silos. So between thinking outside of the box, coming up with creative ideas, making sure that there's continuous collaboration and additional funding, those are all key elements for us moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dozier, same question. What would you do to strengthen the partnership between local government and our nonprofit sector?
Well, and I think there's going to be a lot of themes developing here. Collaboration and not working our silos, those are critical factors for sure. If we're looking at collaboration, as I mentioned before, we need to look for ways to partner and access more funding and bring it into the system. I served as the first chair of the Continuum of Care Board, and this was years ago, and learned that if we're not collaborating, we are leaving money on the table, particularly at the federal level. It took until last summer to get a joint workshop between city and county, and up until that point, a lot of my colleagues didn't really see the connection and the collaboration. We still need to step that up, and we are working more closely with Continuum of Care, and that is great. I will also use that workshop as an example, and I'm getting more specific than I've done in the past. I know for a fact that our experts from the nonprofit community, from the human service agencies, were told not to say exactly what they wanted to say at that meeting. And that has troubled me for a long time. We've seen this in other ways. Yes, city and county staff have their perspective, but we need to respect the expertise of all of you, of all of our partners, and really be open and honest about drawing forward your expertise, even if it's a tough conversation. We may have to say no at some point because of budget or other issues, but we need to be open and honest and allow people to speak their truth because you're the ones on the ground. You are working with clients every day, and you need to bring that information in so that we can make the best decisions and work together.
Thank you, Commissioner. Over to you, Kim.
Okay, this is a two-part question. How do you feel about the Children's Services Council launch and their early grant funding opportunities? And also, how important is it for the city and county to align their funding efforts with the CSC? Mayor Daly?
Well, Kim, you know, this is my wheelhouse. You know that I was the county commissioner that brought the Children's Services Council formally before the county commission to be placed on the ballot. You know I am the commissioner that served for 18 months on the organizational body to get it prepared. You know my wife and I spent over two years and over 200 meetings raising thousands of dollars to put together the campaign to pass the Children's Services Council. I own it. It is a legacy that I am very proud of, and I think it's going to do absolutely amazing things for this community. I am proud of the county commission for who they appointed to the Children's Services Council. I think they've done a great job. I think that the body is a great body. I think they're off to a great start. We can get down into the details of pennies here and pennies there, but as an institution, I think that they are definitely heading in the right direction. And yes, it is very important for all of us to collaborate together. This also goes back to what I said earlier about working in silos. We need to make sure that we're maximizing all of our tax dollars in this community, whether it's the county commission, the city commission, and the Children's Services Council. But, Kim, I could not be more pleased with the creation of the Children's Services Council. I am proud to have brought it in on the ground level and to have led the effort along with my wife, Virginia, and very pleased to see where it's going. And I think one day, we will all look back on this community and realize that the creation of the Children's Services Council truly was a turning point for funding in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you. The CSC is certainly a turning point. Throughout this conversation, many of our conversations, we need more funding in our human service areas, and we know early intervention, working with our kids, is critical. I supported that funding or putting it on the ballot at the county. I will say I disagreed a bit giving money to the private group to do the needs assessment. I wanted that in the sunshine. I thought if we brought that conversation in the sunshine, worked closely with city and county staff, had public meetings, that we may have an easier time passing it, and I'm glad it passed. I am. So I acknowledge that that was my concern early on, but that just speaks to how I like to do business. I like things in the sunshine. I like the public process. Certainly, John and Jenny were great advocates for this, and they worked a lot on it, as did a lot of other people. And they set us up in a good way for the first year. Now, the specific funding allocations this year, I mean, we've seen some questions about that. I think we're going to refine that. We're going to continue to have public, you know, conversations about this. It is an independent body. I'm grateful for the people who are serving on that. But the most important going forward is how we are going to align funding efforts. We have to ensure that all of our different planning efforts, INI, COCA, UPHS, all of the human service agencies and CSC, city and county, that we are working collaboratively, and we know what everyone's doing because that will allow us to have a bigger impact on our community and stretch our dollars farther.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Another tough one, a growing issue that we see is homelessness in our community, and it continues to be an issue. Compound that with the fact that rental rents are increasing as well as low affordable housing stock. So my question is, Mayor Daly, with you first, what immediate and long-term solutions do you believe should be deployed to begin to reduce homelessness in Tallahassee Leon County?
Well, I agree that we are in a housing crisis, just like just about every community across the United States of America. We need more affordable housing. We need more very low-income, low-income workforce. We actually need housing in every price point. So when we talk about the housing issue, that also talks about how do we grow as a community and how do we do it sustainably? Obviously, COVID hit our community hard, especially with the services that are being provided, and I commend each and every one of you. That's why I was such a strong supporter, and I'm the only candidate that voted for the emergency grants for nonprofits during COVID, both for the business community and the nonprofit community. But we need to redouble down on our street outreach. We need to make sure that those that are experiencing homelessness in our community are aware of all the services that were being provided. Hats off to each and every one of you that is working in this space and make sure that we provide the necessary services. I don't think that we are in a position right now that we can say, yes, we are taking care of everything that needs to be taken care of. We have to work collaboratively. We have to follow the lead of the Continuum of Care. We have to make sure it's properly funded, and I give credit to Kristen and the city as well for coming to the plate, both county and city, with ARPAs funding. And Kristen's right. She noted that we have to talk about the long-term strategy as well when it comes to funding after we get over the ARP of hump. But I think it does begin also with housing and making sure that we're taking care of those that are experiencing homelessness.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier, same question, but I'll just reiterate it. What immediate and long-term solutions do you believe should be deployed to begin to reduce homelessness in Tallahassee Leon County?
This is a very big question, and I think we are making a lot of progress, but it has been a struggle for years, as I mentioned before. During COVID, I am very proud of the county's efforts, and when I say county, it only works because we worked with so many of you, so many nonprofits throughout our community, to get emergency assistance funding out the door. I'm not going to spend much time on this, but it is important to note that the business and nonprofit grants, I actually advocated for more money for businesses that have one to five employees. That was the motion on the table. John supported less money for those very small businesses. But when we got to the next steps, I'm the one who brought in the arts organizations. They were left out of the nonprofit. It was only for human service. That was critical. But we need to respect our entire nonprofit community and that all of you were struggling during COVID. So had to say that, Amber, forgive me, but for homelessness, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, more veterans housing, we have to get more housing in the pipeline, absolutely. When the city sells property, we should make a priority for affordable housing, for workforce housing, and also for transitional housing. I think there's some things working through right now, but we've sold property in the last few years that wasn't dedicated to those areas. More than that, we have to make sure that the essential services provided by the Carney Center, by Big Ben Homeless, by CCYS, by all of our different partners, and forgive me if I left a few out, there's a whole lot. Those are the first three that came to mind. We have to make sure that you have the basic that we can support in any different way, from bus passes to support for facilities and other things. We've been doing that for a long time. We need to step this up and make sure we're having this broad collaborative conversation. and make sure we're having this broad collaborative conversation so that we help those who are most vulnerable and really help them transition out of homelessness and find a safe place to live.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question is also a big topic, diversity, equity, inclusion. As a sector, we recognize the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion in our operational practices and have begun implementing resources for the sector to implement. So Mayor Daly, what commitment to DEI will you make when elected to office?
Well, once again, if you look at my record, when I first got elected, I was one of, and I think I'm still one of three mayors in the state of Florida that has a mayor's LGBTQ plus advisory council. It is important that we make sure that all voices are represented. And so I moved very quickly to establish LGBTQ plus advisory council and we've been able to do amazing things based off the recommendations that come out. In fact, remember, the city of Tallahassee has a perfect 100 score for the second year in a row on the MEI, the municipal equality index, and that is something that we should all be very proud of. Also, as mayor, we actually created the Office of Diversity at the city of Tallahassee, knowing that it's extremely important, both internally with our workforce, but also externally as well, that we show Tallahassee that we are committed. Look, I think that we are nationally recognized and we are nationally recognized as one of the top 10 cities in the Southeast United States to live, work and play. We are recognized as a caring community. We are recognized as a giving community. And I am very proud to be the mayor that are leading these efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier, what commitment to DEI will you make when elected to office?
I am absolutely committed to DEI as a county commissioner. That will continue as the next mayor of Tallahassee. I'm current member of the COCA board and have really been proud of the conversation and the new members on the board we have in recent years who have been digging into this issue and looking at COCA's grant system and how it can be more equitable for all types of organizations and particularly for those who may not have received funding for a long time. Let's just be honest about that. DEI needs to be a priority in all of our conversations. I have to say with the advisory council, the LGBTQ advisory council, I've heard from a lot of members that don't necessarily feel like all of the recommendations have been brought forward. And I think something like that, there needs to be, if it's in the mayor's office, it should be a regular update to the commission. I would rather see that board report directly to the full commission. I think when we elevate these things, it gives it more teeth and we can really get those recommendations in the pipeline. This is just a really big question. My mind's going a lot of different directions because I think the honest answer is we have worked on this in increments over the years, but really we've seen more focus, we all know this, in just the last few years. And it is just highlighting more and more that we have to do. We have to increase funding. I'm going to go back to COCA for organizations that may not qualify for the tourist dollars. I am glad the city committed 300,000. I wish that had happened before, as I said before. That's the same reason why we need to increase funding for CHSP that's more flexible, that can support organizations that may not qualify for CDBG or something else. That may sound very technical. We all know that, but it does help support those organizations, more minority organizations that may not, you know, have been working in our community for decades and or easily qualify for some of the funding.
Thank you.
Amber, I forgot. And Kristin, if you bear with me, I would not be doing my job if I did not promote and include and invite everybody to join. I forgot. The city of Tallahassee's 2022 Race Relations Summit that'll take place next Wednesday at the Civic Center. It's open to the public and we hope everyone can come join us. I'm sorry about.
And we'll make sure everybody has information on that after the fact as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm next. Please share something about the nonprofit sector that you would like to see improved. Mayor Daly?
Well, again, I think that we have got an incredibly strong nonprofit sector and I am always impressed each and every day with the work that is being done, especially on the front line. And you can pick whatever category you want, but it's just absolutely amazing. Not only during normal times, but I've had the opportunity to serve as chairman of the county commission twice during declared state of emergencies and as the mayor of Tallahassee. And watching our nonprofit sector work together as well during times of crisis is absolutely amazing. Kim, I'm going to go back to my original statement that while we're doing a great job, I still think that there is work for us to be able to do to increase our effectiveness by working collaboratively. And again, this does not rest just solely on the shoulders of the nonprofit community, but it includes the faith base. It includes the business community. It includes the government. I think together as a community, we can all do a better job to strengthen the nonprofit community. Great question.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier?
Well, I won't spend too much time on the collaboration and working together. We've talked about that a lot. I think one area that I'd like to see improved is really focusing on the economic impact of our nonprofit sector. You have a $3.9 billion economic impact. I think we're over 11,000 more jobs in the sector in our region. And recognizing how much the nonprofit sector contributes to our economy, not just supports those who may need services or contributes to arts, culture, heritage, faith base. All of those things are value-added for our community and it's hard to wrap our minds around just how much we benefit. We, I think we all know this, but elevating this for the community and the reports that UPAHS, any and COCA helped, you know, or worked on together in the last few years have really started to show the broader community what these numbers are. And we need to continue to focus on that and really make sure everyone in Tallahassee and Leon understands that this is not just a sector that benefits us in all of those other ways that are more well-known, but also is a critical part of our economy and our job base. In doing that, we need to bring you into the conversation more strategically with economic development, with our chambers, with others, and really make sure that every decision we're making that focuses on economic development recognizes both the impacts of the humans or the nonprofit sector, but also the benefits we gain for our economic growth and development.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, last question that we have teed up for you and then I do have a few in the chat. We'll open it up for an additional one or two. But as of this week, the city made some decisions on how to invest in gun violence interruption. This Children's Services Council recently made the decision to add it as a priority and as a funding initiative. So what do you think is the best way we can work together to ensure the funding makes the greatest impact? And we'll start with you, Mayor Daly.
Oh, Amber, I am so excited about the steps that we took Wednesday at our workshop. And for those of you that did not have the opportunity to participate, the city commission unanimously decided to engage formally GVI, which is a nationally recognized program, recognized for their excellence and their success, bringing in the academic experts to truly study and work with our local providers here. What I think they're going to do, Amber, is help us bridge this gap of collaboration and making sure that we're maximizing all the services that we can provide in regards to alleviating gun violence in our community. We're investing more in Crime Stoppers because we know it works locally. We're investing more in restorative justice because we know it works locally. And on top of that, like I said, we're putting a half a million dollars this year and $600,000 next year into a newly created category at the UPA, excuse me, the CHSP funding, specifically to help those organizations that are on the front line, day in and day out, helping to deter gun violence in our community. This is in line with the priorities of the commission on the status of men and boys. This is in line with the priorities of the county. This is in line with the priorities of the school district and I would argue it's probably in line with the priorities of each and every organization that's represented here today. I am proud to have made the motion and helped craft our direction. And I'm proud that we came together as a city commission for a unanimous vote. The energy coming out of the city commission chambers the other day was just electrifying and it was exciting. We have a lot of work to do, no doubt about it. But I think we took a major step as a community and it's important that we align our priorities, align our funding streams, make sure we're all on the same page moving forward and we are going to make a difference. I think history will look back on this particular time in our community and the decision that was made on Wednesday and recognize that it was truly a turning point moving forward. Now, let me be clear, we're not going to solve gun violence overnight. It's going to take time, but we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dozier, with the funding initiatives put forth to combat gun violence locally, what do you think the best way that we can work together to ensure funding makes the greatest impact?
So I think the best way we can make sure we have the best impact is through collaboration, through listening to each other and recognizing that we need all hands on deck. And I think a lot of folks in our neighborhoods, those impacted by gun violence, particularly our faith community and so many of you understand that and we are ready to work together. That was evidenced in that workshop on Wednesday. And I am very glad that we got there. My question is, why did it take so long? The city-directed staff, I'm very glad they did. They told them they were going to set aside a million dollars each year for the next five last March. It's my experience on the county, we could have held a workshop a month or two later and gotten the same level of conversation that we got at the workshop this week. Yes, it's going to take a long time to address these issues, but the city needs to move more quickly to get that public collaboration in, in the first place, before bringing items to the commission that, you know, really comes after. There were a lot of questions. Now, let me be clear because John has said this repeatedly. I don't take issue with him having a meeting at his house. I meet with stakeholders with you all all the time, not as much during COVID. I miss a lot of you, but I meet with folks all the time. As your elected leaders, we should do that. The questions came up because a lot of us were told the agenda was going to be based on those meetings. The recommendations were going to be based on those meetings. I'm glad it didn't happen. But this example, what we've just been through and how long it took to get there and the questions about this and the feelings that people had about whether or not the city was picking favorite organizations or really responsive to all organizations in our community, all ideas in our community, that's what we've got to get past. That is the best way to move forward. That's how we support the efforts of the commission on the status of men and boys. Commission on Status of Women and Girls has to be included in that. But also the Rise Center, which I've worked with Sheriff on for a long time. And thank you very much. We've got a lot more to do and I'm glad we're coming together.
Thank you both and for enduring our questions. Specific to your last point, we did have a question that came through the chat that we've kind of tweaked a bit. Kathleen, I posed it to you, but I'm happy to share it if you don't see that in the chat currently.
I do see it. So we're going to go ahead and go on to this question then. And so same format, we're going to start with you, Mayor Daly. So how would you ensure that all voices are heard when it comes to new initiatives and policy direction while not violating sunshine law? And I can repeat the question.
Am I off mute? Oh yeah, look, after 16 years in public service, I know what the sunshine law is and we have never violated the sunshine law. It's important to know that as mayor of Tallahassee, I will never back down from my promise to meet with everybody. You better believe I have people over at my house and we break bread. The sunshine law covers other elected officials being there as well. When you're by yourself, meeting with the public, that's what you expect me to do. You expect me to convene people. In fact, Kathleen, I remember before COVID, we had a great program that I look forward to bringing back called The Longest Table, where we would actually bring people together all over this community to talk about ideas, to share about our community and how do we move forward. And if you recall, Kathleen, right before COVID hit, as elected officials, Kristin included, we challenged the community to open your doors, invite people into your home that you do not know, to break bread and to talk about the issues. Now, here we are in the silly season of the political campaigns and I'm actually being criticized by my opponent for doing exactly what we challenged the community to do, to move this community forward. I have met with people at my house. I have met with people at their house. I've met with people at city hall. I've met with people over coffee, over lunch in restaurants, in the back of churches and other houses of worship. And I will continue to do so because I truly believe that that's what you expect. You want a mayor that is going to continuously convene people, listen, and that's how we move the community forward. But I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. When it comes specifically to the sunshine law, you must have two or more elected officials for there to be a violation. That's why when I meet, I don't meet with other elected officials.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dozier, same question. How would you ensure all voices be heard when it comes to new initiatives and policy direction while not violating sunshine law?
Well, forgive me for laughing a bit there. I hope I was quiet. Silly season indeed. John, if you actually listened to my answers for the last couple of months, I've never criticized, and I didn't just now, you meeting with people at your house. I said that very clearly a minute ago. That is not the issue. I do that all the time. We have to do it. In fact, some of the most important meetings are when we go and see you all at your office, but even more than that, I'm, you know, going out to deliver meals or going to see people who have just come out of reentry programs. I mean, that's really where we get a chance to hear directly and see these programs in action. So we should be doing that. I celebrate that. I've done it for 12 years as your county commissioner. We continue to do that. Making sure that we bring people in the public process, this is something, again, I think I've touched on this throughout because this is one of the most critical issues. We need to, as a city government, and we have not seen this as much as we should in recent years, but for a long time, we need to create more opportunities to bring all of our nonprofit sector into our conversations and not just when we're talking about one issue like homelessness, but when we're talking about economic development, when we're talking about transportation. We have ways of including the, you know, voices in some of those conversations. We need to elevate that, expand that. Having the conversations before we get to an agenda item and you've got your three minutes to speak, that's really important. That's when we do the deep collaborative work and we can produce better ideas that bring them to the commission. It's about respect. When we have, you know, questions, and that's really all it was. Number of us had the same list of things that we were told we're going to be in the city commission agenda back beginning of September that came out of the meeting at the mayor's house. It wasn't about the meeting. It's about, wait, are you going to be putting these ideas forward before you hear from the broader community? We don't need that kind of controversy. Whatever happened there, we don't need that kind of controversy.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Amber, there's no controversy and let's be clear that we need leaders that are not going to lead based on innuendo and whisper campaigns. Take the, you take the agenda items as they can and as you saw, the end result was a collaboration of all conversations that have been taking place.
Thank you both. I'm going to move on to another very loaded question before opening it up for one or two left. Kim, I know you've got some sketchy internet, but we, a question posed to us is, can you share your views on the 27 million allocated to the stadium? Why did you vote for or against this? And if you could, how would you use this money differently to help better serve our community? And we'll start with you, Mayor Daly.
I strongly supported the renovations of Doak Campbell, Bragg Stadium and the TCC facility as well. As it was reported in our community, we have a billion-dollar tourism industry here in Tallahassee. The largest driver is collegiate sports, in particular, college football. The return on investment was strong. It continues to be strong and it was a wise decision to move forward. You were going to hear, oh, well, the money could have been spent for job creation, but yet never once was another idea proposed moving forward. And there are restrictions on exactly how that money can be spent. But when I got President Robinson that comes and testifies and says, if we can't create a partnership, we are not going to have a football season in Bragg Stadium. When we have Florida state presidents that come and say, we are asking for the partnership for life-saving structural issues surrounding Doak Campbell Stadium, knowing that these improvements are going to continue to ensure our financial success to our tourism industry, absolutely, I'm proud of the vote.
Same question to you, Commissioner Dozier.
Well, I'm sure we have all heard lots and lots about this over the last year and a half, and particularly during the campaign. Quickly, because I want to get to the core issue here. The boosters could have funded this Doak Campbell Stadium themselves. This is about priorities. We have so many needs in the community. That was not the highest and best need and we put a lot of our economic development money into one basket. We've got 1.3 million for the next four to five years. And that is going to get us, make us be more creative to create jobs, do workforce training. For Bragg, that was a completely different scenario. When we rushed the decision. When we rush the decision and don't allow our staff and others to get creative, that's really where it ended up. I argued against using our jobs funding. This was September 20 for Bragg Stadium, but I wanted us to go and look for other opportunities, look for other funding from city and county because the need there was greater. The key point here, and I'm sorry, I just, I've heard this too many times, never once was another idea put on the table. That is extraordinary. In the first two years of this tax, '20 and '21, the Blueprint Board committed $22 million. We have a revolving loan fund supporting minority and women-owned businesses that can't qualify for traditional loans. We've funded over half a million dollars for 11 businesses in the last year and a half. We supported incubators, nonprofits, that's direct benefit for both universities. We supported Danfoss, we supported Amazon, we supported local businesses. To say that there was not one idea on the table, where has John been? We have been working on economic development, we passed a referendum in '14. We've opened the Office of Economic Vitality in '16. We have done studies, we know where the jobs, you know, that we need jobs and how to get them. The Neighborhood First Plans include jobs, include a line saying a lot of places, OEV funding.
We're at time.
We know we need jobs, the work was there, and we should have kept that money for the promise we made to the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Where I was referring specifically to the discussion during.
You're going to get 30 seconds again?
No, we're going to move on, we're going to move on.
The Office of Economic Vitality Creation.
Thank you. Thank you both. We do have time for one more question. If someone wants to raise their hand. Stanley, I did see your question, we did ask that related to making sure all voices are at the table. Is there anyone else that has a quick question that we can ask before we wrap up and give our thanks to both candidates? And I'm trying to look in the chat and see if anyone's hands are raised. I do see one.
Donna Pearl's hand is raised.
Perfect. Donna, if you want to come off mute, you'll be our final question.
Great, thank you, Amber. I'm going to ask about the arts, because I did mention it in the city commissioners' meeting on Wednesday, but in the overall study of GVI, there was no mention of the arts. And we had a wonderful speaker through COCA on Wednesday morning that highlighted like all the things that make art more than just art. It increases the grades of our youth who participate in art. It could be music, it could be dance, doesn't always have to be theater. But it also decreases the dropout rate, it increases our mental health. So I'm hoping in that million dollars, there's some funding for that. So I'd like to ask the mayor, and then as a follow-up, Kristen, are we going to consider putting in more art-based programs to help combat gun violence?
Hey, Donna, that's a great question. I appreciate you asking. It was good to see you when I participated on the panel on Wednesday morning and then also at the city commission meeting. Yeah, the short answer is absolutely. I think that's part of the entire makeup the GVI will be looking at in our community. When we talk about identifying the resources that we have to combat gun violence, we have to have a holistic approach. So absolutely, I think that there's going to be a very large role for the arts community to play as we move forward. And so, yes, as we begin the study with GVI and we bring in academic experts and we have these roundtables and they're doing all of their interviews and really digging in to create the roadmap. Absolutely, I expected the arts community to be at the table. Great question, and thanks for the reminder.
Going to me?
Commissioner Dozier?
Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you, Donna, for the question. And I was going into another meeting, but I'm pretty sure you brought those comments into the workshop on Wednesday. So thank you for that. I think we know arts-based programs and art therapy as well can really help those who experience trauma. And when we talk about trauma, it's not just, you know, a violent incident, but the trauma of living in poverty, of not having enough to eat, of things like that. We had, I think we need to focus on these programs, particularly when we think about early intervention. I agree that this should be part of the GVI study and the collaborative work. But I also want to say, and something I didn't mention before, the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys structure, that county, you know, worked with the sheriff on that. We brought it forward, I'm glad the city and school board joined us in that funding, and now they've got a grant and other funding coming in. A lot of their work is going to overlap, at least in my understanding, with what GVI is doing. And again, this goes back to the collaborations, but also not using our resources very strategically and making sure that we're all working together. So as GVI gets going, I really strongly hope, and if I'm mayor, I will make sure that the work of GVI and the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys and Women and Girls and our other organizations, all of you that are collecting data, we need to feed all of that into the process so that we can get very creative and get programs, and circling back to your question, Donna, and really highlight things that may not be the top of everyone's list, like arts and art therapy programs.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we're wrapping up for the day. So thank you so much, Mayor Daley and Commissioner Dozier, for your time and participation in today's forum. And our thanks to everybody who joined us today and you, because you shared your questions and your comments. We really appreciate it. The general election is November 8th, and your voice makes a difference. Make sure you are represented and are ready to vote. So more information is available on that at leanvotes.gov and through UPHS, COCA, and INE. So candidate responses and recording of today's candidate forum will be available at the UPH, INE, and COCA websites early next week. And a reminder that our next candidate commission, or forum, is the County Commission seat two on Friday, October 21st at 1:00 PM. That's a week from today on Zoom, so you can register at uphfl.org. So thank you, everybody. Be well, have a great weekend, and we will see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Good to see everybody. Take care.